I'm Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the City Council's COVID-19 Response Committee. This is our bi-weekly regular meeting. We're joined by Councilor Edwards and the Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Commissioner Helen Colton Harris. Commissioner, thank you for joining us, and I know you have a few updates related to recent orders issued by the administration. So we'll begin with those and then, as usual, move into any questions from there.
So from a, and thank you very much for the opportunity. From a data perspective, as I think you know, we are continuing to see the cases rise in the city of Springfield. Last week, we had 40 more cases than we did the previous week. So previous week, we had 477 cases. This week, we had 517. I think the disturbing trend continues to be what I'm seeing as far as our younger ages are concerned. So the zero to 10-year-olds were 119 cases last week. That's unheard of in terms of just that age group. Obviously, they can't be vaccinated, and so they are depending on us, the elders and their parents, to protect them. So the other, I think, disturbing thing about the data, as I tried to put it in a different format, is that August of last year, we had 182 cases. That was 2020. This year, August 2021, we are now at 1,647 cases. So as you can see, last summer, we had somewhat of a dip, so that we weren't seeing the prevailing cases that we're seeing, that we're seeing right now. I'm sorry, the zero to 10 was 111 cases, the 11 to 20 was 68, and then the 21 to 30 was 90. We're still seeing, this week, it was 79% of our cases were under the age of 50. The prior week, it was 86. The week before that, it was 88. So again, this is a, a virus, this Delta virus is really ravaging our younger, the younger individuals in our community. As far as the city is concerned, we have, do have the Youth Task Force. I met with the three youth today, who will be named to Vax Force. They will reach out to six other youth, and then they will comprise the Youth Council. It's really important that we get those youth voices as a part of this effort that we're doing. So the data, again, is up on the city's website. You are more than welcome to take a look at it, ask me any questions, once you've had a chance to examine all of the charts, or obviously, I can take some questions now. Last Thursday, I met with Bill Mahoney and Ed Pacula. The purpose, and the purpose of the meeting was really to talk about mask mandates. I needed to get a sense of the unions and what their thought process is around mandates for not only masks but vaccinations. And so I met with them last Tuesday, I'm sorry, a week ago today. And I know, Councilor Letterman, you called me, I think, yesterday or the day before yesterday. Can't remember it all now. But obviously, you know that the city has put the mask mandate in place for city employees, as well as visitors to all city venues, like libraries, senior centers. The staff should have face coverings, as well as anybody who visits those city departments. So we believe that most people will comply. We also know we are probably going to have some challenges with members of our, members of the city, and so we do those on a case-by-case basis. I continue to work with Springfield Public Schools. They are doing an excellent job of trying to keep their students safe. There is the mask mandate for the public schools that hasn't been enforced. I just got off the phone with Jeanne Clancy, and they are obviously working to make sure that there are many vaccinations as possible, because we can vaccinate over the age of 12. She's trying to make sure all the teachers are, who want to be vaccinated, are being vaccinated. We may go to mandatory mask for all participants in Springfield Public Schools, but that decision will be made by the school committee, as well as Jeanne Clancy and her nursing staff. But they are all, but working with them has been a pleasure. They always keep me informed, and we always have, you know, have each other's back in terms of making good recommendations. So the mask mandate is in place tomorrow. It starts tomorrow. The, the last thing I'll say before I take questions is we are changing the location of our vaccination clinics, the, for the city. The traction at Ray Jordan Center, as well as Brightwood, has been very, very low. We're getting one, or two, or three, or four. And so we're going to switch those vaccination clinics on Tuesday and Thursday. We have a clinic at the Department of Health and Human Services, which is in the nursing unit. So we will be on Thursday, during the day, we will be doing vaccinations at our 311 State Street site, and we will also be doing vaccinations Tuesday evening at our 311 State Street site. As you know, that building is very centrally located. It's right on State Street. So we're hopeful, by moving it to a central loca, moving hours to a central location, that will help increase the foot traffic. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a few questions myself, but before I get started, if Council Hurst or Councilor Edwards, and we're also joined by Council Hurst now, would like to ask any questions, certainly entertain those, because I have a, might uncover a few different areas.
I apologize, just very quickly, could you just go over those? Am I correct, the numbers? I got zero to 10, 111, 11 to 20? Could you give me that number again?
Let me go back to my screen.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's fine, it's fine. So zero to 10 is 111. Let me put my glasses on. Zero to 10 is 111, 11 to 20 is 68, 21 to 30 is 90, 31 to 40 is 82, 41 to 50 is 60, 51 to 60 is 60, 61 to 70 is 22, 71 to 80 is 21, 81 to 90 is 2, 91 to 100 is 1. I think the other thing that's important to say about those numbers is that, that number, starting with the 61 to 70 and the 71 to 80, those are the individuals we could potentially see hospitalized, because it means that these are older individuals. As you know, 26% of the individuals who are hospitalized locally right now are vaccinated. That means 74% are unvaccinated that are in the hospital at this point. But that, but the 61 to 70, 71 to 80, and of course, the other older numbers, those are individuals who could wind up hospitalized due to, due to COVID.
And, and just real quickly, the, the last year numbers compared to this year, also, could you have?
Sure, absolutely. So in August of 2020, we had 182 cases. In August of 2021, so far, and this is the last day, and this, this data stopped on the, I believe, the 29th, there's 1,647 cases. But I also should say, in January of 2020, there were, I'm sorry, January 2021, there were 4,342 cases. So January of 2021 was a very high month for us, and then it started to go down in February, and continued to go down. But we are, of course, seeing an uptick right now. Any other data I can give you, Councilor?
No, actually, I'm hopeful to use that to try to communicate to people the urgency of compliance and of taking the vaccine. So I appreciate you taking the time to repeat it for me, and hopefully, I can get some more people to, to buy into what you're working so diligently to get done.
Thank you, appreciate you, Councilor Edwards.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards. Council Hurst?
Um, go ahead, Councilor Letterman. I'm actually right around the corner from my house, and I'd like to get there before I ask my question, if possible.
No problem. All right, so, so Commissioner, on a couple of the points that you had brought up, first just on the vaccination clinic moving down to 311, is there accessible parking there?
Yes, so there, there, we have a parking lot behind the building. There is a ramp that goes up, so it is accessible during, certainly during the Tuesday evening clinic, I'm sorry, yeah, the Tuesday evening clinics, there'll be plenty of parking behind the building. On Thursday morning, on Thursday, when we have the clinics, I will ask my staff to park across the street at the, another building that Mr. Cataldo owns, and they will park there, and that will leave it accessible for individuals who want to come and get vaccinated.
Now, right now, our latest clinic runs till 6 o'clock, right?
It should be 4 to 7.
4 to 7, I thought it was 4 to 6. All right, because there was one, I was just having some conversations with a couple of different groups in the last several weeks, who were wondering about some later clinics, and maybe if we could explore making it effective, how to do some perhaps a little later, just depending on people's schedules as well.
So yes, it is ours, the ones at 311 will be 4 to 7, and that means the last appointment says 7. We probably don't leave there until 8 or so, depending on what the foot traffic looks like, but it will be 4 to 7.
And, and then relative to the public schools, starting, I was at DeBarry this morning, welcoming students, and certainly saw a good compliance there with the mask policy. I know that the administration had spoken about continued pool testing through the year. Can you talk a little bit about what that's looking like and how we're going to track that data? Because obviously, the schools restarting is the biggest change that we're seeing right now, and especially considering the fact that under 12 cannot be vaccinated, and that even the 12 to 17 is still very low percentage. So what are we looking for in that data, and how, how, how are we getting it?
Well, first of all, you know that the DESI is not keeping school data anymore. So, well, let me say, they're keeping it, they're not publishing it. And so we are continuing to do pool testing. The pool testing is being done by Springfield Public School nurses, and in all of, of the schools. And so we are keeping track of the data that way, through the Springfield Public School system, as well as DPH. We do report it to DPH, but they're not putting that back out to us again. So we are keeping the data. As far as pool testing is concerned, the state changed labs on us, and so, right now, Jeanne Clancy, Springfield Public Schools, are trying to work with the new lab that they've given us, so that we can get the same kind of compliance around lab results and lab reports that we had in the past. I don't have the name of the lab, but I know it's only been a couple of days where they have had the opportunity to meet with this new lab, because that's the lab that will be doing the testing for us.
So what will the, can you talk about how the, how the testing, or are they testing a random sampling of students? Are they doing it in every school?
There, there is a pool of students who are tested within each classroom on a rotating basis. So they're not tested every day, but they are tested. Really what it is, is trying to get a sampling of how the virus is penetrating the younger people in our schools. So all students are not being tested. It's definitely a pool testing. What we are, what we have as a team decided is that we're going to use the test-and-stay model. That means that we will test the students, and if, and we will test the students, and if they are negative, obviously, they can stay in school. If they're positive, we will do north, south, east, and west, which means the people sitting to their right, to their left, in front, and in back, and those are the individuals who will be a part of the, of the pool testing. I said that backwards. If a student tests positive, we will test those students around them, and if they're negative, they'll be able to stay.
Okay. Excellent. Now, moving order over to the, the mask policy. Obviously, this applies to all municipal buildings. What is our, what, what is the current advice of the Department of Public Health in general relative to masks? I know we held a meeting of this committee a couple of weeks ago with Dr. Del Pilar from Bay State. He was able to give a lot of advice as to the situations, as he sees it with the Delta variant. So what, what is the, what's the current advice of the administration and your department, and sort of what, what are we using to inform that?
I'm not, I'm not understanding the question. Are you asking?
We're only mandating, we're only mandating masks at this time inside public buildings, public municipal buildings, right? So i.e. City Hall, Tapley Street, senior centers. I just make sure I understand the order correctly.
Senior centers, libraries, anywhere that the public interfaces with a city department, DPW, all city, all municipal departments, the employees, as well as visitors, should have on masks.
Okay. And then our advisory is still for indoors, anywhere, any indoor public space, is that correct?
Any indoor public space, yes. That, that's the broader advisory. But we have not gone to the place of talking about restaurants and private businesses, so that's not happening right now. But, you know, publicly, in public places, we are asking that individuals wear face coverings outside of municipal buildings.
Okay. I see Council Whitfield has also joined us. I know Council Hurst had a question. I'm not sure if he's prepared to ask it.
I am, actually, actually, a couple of different questions. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Number one, Commissioner, as it relates to the schools and the school buses, so, so now my wife and I have put our child on a school bus to Arana. Today, you had between 30 and 40 kids on the school bus. I guess the limit is, I think it's either 53 or 63. I know next week, the elementary kids are getting ready to, you know, to add to that number, and so they'll probably, probably be anywhere from 40 to 50 to 55 kids on a bus, where capacity is around 63. That means that kids are probably sitting right next to each other on the bus. Is that, is that what we envisioned for, for the school system? Is that, is that just, is that the best we can do? Is that safe?
It is DESI's recommendation, Council Hurst. As you know, I, yeah, it's DESI's recommendation. When we originally started talking about buses, we were wanting there to be at least three feet in between the children on buses. The capacity to be able to have those children on the bus became an issue, I believe. But DESI is now saying that they do not need to have the physical separation that we had envisioned originally. So I think that's an issue for, obviously, the school committee. It's an issue for DESI, who puts out the guidance and recommendations. Is that the best we can do? I think that, given what I'm seeing as far as the data is concerned, it's challenging to think about 40 to 50 children, for me, on one bus, particularly with these numbers I'm seeing from the zero to 10-year-old. So we know that the virus is circulating, but the decision around buses and transportation rests squarely with DESI and with Springfield Public Schools and the school committee.
So I guess that also, you know, I, I guess I struggle with that as well. You know, and our over-reliance, I feel like, on the, on what the state does, or DESI, I, I think I just, a couple of weeks into you, the guidance from Mayor Kim Janey in Boston, in terms of requiring all masks to be worn, and, you know, throughout Boston, I believe it was in all enclosed areas. You know, obviously, it's hard to enforce it, you know, but certainly, they were going above and beyond early, considering the Delta virus and, and probably the potential impact. We, we have yet to get there. And so, you know, I guess, I guess I'm not looking for a response. It, it, it just seems to me that oftentimes, we wait on the numbers to dictate what it is we do, but, you know, we, we also can predict what the numbers are going to be. You know, they, they, they're going to be astronomical. And so, you know, the idea that we have folks, I mean, my, my youngest is going to be sitting next to my older brother, so I guess that gives me a little, or his older brother gives me a little, you know, consolation, but, you know, it, it, you got $127 million here. I, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm confused as to how, you know, we're not taking the precautions, and we didn't plan for it, and we're relying on DESI, you know, when we're talking about the health of our kids, and the health of our residents here. I'm also looking at after-school activities. You know, I don't, I don't know what to do, right? Like, do you take your kids out? I'm looking at it based off of what I saw yesterday when my kid was playing soccer, and I'm like, you know, without any sort of mandate, folks aren't going to require the kids to wear masks, you know, when they're engaging in these after-school activities. Maybe I should be requiring my kid to wear it, even though they're outdoors. But I, you know, I don't know. I don't have any answers, but it, it definitely seems like we ought to be a bit more, you know, vigilant to the extent we can, considering what we know is getting ready to have.
I, I don't disagree with you. I was talking to someone today at DPH, and I, to have children right now who are in school has to give you some level of anxiety, because I'm not sure what I would do if my children were in that situation. So to be honest with you, Council Hurst, I think that it's important that your concerns continue to be expressed, and particularly to the administration, and I can say myself, but also to the school committee, and also to the superintendent, because they have the ability to make the decisions around Springfield Public Schools, and if they'd like something different to happen, they can put those policies in place theoretically. I don't know if it can happen practically, to be quite honest with you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and keep up the great work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council Hurst. Council Whitfield, I know you've joined us. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great. Did you have something for the Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, and I don't know if you said it already, if folks that's contracting COVID more than once is being tracked?
Yes, well, we, we track it through our contact tracing, yes. So if an individual has COVID several times or more than one time, we do track that, so we know that. As you know, we send all of the addresses to the first responders, so that they're able to know when they have to respond to houses, if there's any risk to them. But yes, we do know who is testing positive several times, and I can tell you, there are individuals who are testing positive several times, who are just being absolutely careless.
Yeah.
You know, this is, I mean, I knew that we were going to get here as far as our cases were concerned. I thought it was going to happen in October, November. I did not believe that we were going to be sitting here in July and August and looking at this kind of surge. The Delta variant is real, it's scary, it's very contagious. And so I just, you know, we, we put the advice out there that we can. We've made vaccination clinics available all across this city. You all know that Bay State's numbers have jumped, that are, have doubled as far as people who are in the hospitals. So we're just, on all levels, just seeing a surge that is hopefully going to, as people continue to get vaccinated, hopefully, it'll continue, it'll go down at some point.
If they get vaccinated. I mean, the opportunity is there, so it's not right.
There's no reason why people can't get vaccinated. I just need to say that. There are vaccination clinics all over this city and state. The testing line now at Eastfield Mall is about two hours long, they tell me. So it's just, things are just really progressing very, very quickly as far as this Delta variant is concerned. But it's not just, as you know, it's not just the city of Springfield, although our vaccination rate is lower. This is happening across the state and across the nation.
Thank you, Council Whitfield. Commissioner, relative to testing beyond Eastfield Mall, what is available for walk-up testing as we head into the fall?
Right now, the only testing that I know about that is localized and available quickly is Eastfield Mall. There are, there are other testing sites, AFC, you can go to and get a rapid test done. So there are other testing venues, but as far as a large-scale testing operation, Eastfield Mall is the only one that I know about.
Okay. Excellent. Any further questions for the Commissioner?
We are getting ready for boosters.
Would you like to speak to that a little more before we move? I see Council Hurst has his hands up, but, but actually, can you speak a little more to that?
Well, we will begin boosters in October, the early, so they will go into the nursing homes first, because remember, that's where they did the first vaccinations. So they will go into the long-term care facilities and do those first. And then I, I myself got vaccinated in February, so October will be the time, the eight months for me, then when we, and so it'll be rolling, because we all got vaccinated at different months, but we will be doing boosters for the general public, not the boosters that are being recommended for those immune-compromised. I'm asking those individuals to go to their pri, their primary care physician, so that we can make sure that the booster is what they need, and that their health is able to receive it.
And will we, will we reach out to individuals who are vaccinated at local sites to do so? And also, that begs the question that, you know, there were many people vaccinated at the state site, at the mass vaccinations. I was, I was vaccinated at the mass vaccination site. So will we be expecting that those individuals, at least in Springfield, will likely seek then the booster through our venues? And are we prepared for that? Because it is a significant, I mean, 53% of the city has received a first dose, 40, I just have the number, and 46% are fully vaccinated. So it's a significant number of people who will be theoretically seeking boosters. Are we, are we prepared for that?
We are not prepared by ourselves. Do we have a system in place that I believe is prepared? Yes. So Bay State will step up, Trinity will step up, Tapestry will step up, Karen Health Center will step up, so Mason Square, Brightwood. So we will have a system of care to be able to hopefully give boosters. I am not sure, the state has not said what they're going to do about, you know, that mass vaccination site. My concern is people coming into Springfield, and you know, that we're going to have to say, we're only going to do Springfield residents, because remember, the Eastfield Mall site was across the, actually, across the Western region, and maybe the Commonwealth. So right now, I'm working on a policy to try to consider how we can vaccinate Springfield residents versus open our doors up to everyone, which we have not turned people away at this point.
Well, certainly, but I think, I think if we're expected to, to provide the boosters, has DPH been in touch to share with us whether they'll actually, I mean, will they be providing the vaccines and in the numbers that's needed for booster shots, if, if the recommendation is that everybody get a booster?
They say they're ready. They say they have the vaccines. They say enough have been produced of Moderna and both Pfizer. They say enough have been produced of Moderna and both Pfizer. And they say that they are able to adequately supply Boards of Health and other venues. Now, I'm not sure if the Bay States or the Trinities can say, you know, we just want to do Springfield residents. So it may be that it's just the Board of Health decision for the city of Springfield. That I'm not clear about at this point, but they say they have the vaccines.
Council Hurst, followed by Council Edwards.
I had a couple of questions. We'll see which ones I can remember. At at-home testing kits, have have we, are are those available? I feel like I, we got like a box of twenty-four at, where we don't, Arambe, I believe. Is that reliable? Is that, is that overly expensive? Are they selling those things over the counter? Is there a recommendation as to whether folks should have those readily available? Or is it every time your kid is, you know, feeling the sniffles, you ought to just take him to a testing site and now wait two hours? What, what are your thoughts on that, Commissioner?
Well, I, you know, I think that for me, the P C R test is the gold standard. The rapid tests, there are many people who rely on them. But I don't think that we are in a position to be able to adequately say that those test kits are a hundred percent reliable. Maybe nothing is. They're very expensive, as you know. And so the average person is not going to be able to afford to get one of those rapid kiss kits and get it consistently next week and the following week. So, yeah, I mean, there are many people who, and the rapid tests at A A F C, people rely on those as well. I personally think that the P C R test is the one that that we should rely on as far as results are concerned.
Got it. And in terms of the booster shot, if you've taken Moderna, do we stick with Moderna or are we switching up to Pfizer? Or what's, what's the, what are folks saying in terms of what it is that people should do with respect to the booster?
The recommendation is that you stay with the vaccine that you got the original dosage with. So if it was J and J, you'll get a second one of those. Moderna, you'll get a third one. And Pfizer, you'll get a third one. So the recommendation is to stay with the vaccine that you originally was, were provided.
Thank you. And then the last question is, i- is the purpose of the booster to make it less likely that you will contract the Delta variant? I mean, it seems to me, and I I guess I'm always questioning how effective these vaccines are in terms of preventing folks from getting or contracting COVID nineteen. I think it seems like the data is abundantly clear that they will stop hospitalizations and 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 certainly death. But but what about contracting the virus and then also spreading the virus? You know, if you've already been vaccinated.
Well, you've asked a couple of great questions. So we know that people who are fully vaccinated can spread the virus. We know that it's in your nose. And we know that even if you're vaccinated, you can infect other individuals. So that is, when the, when, when we first got vaccinated, our two doses, we were about ninety-three to ninety-five percent, depending on which data point you listen to, effective as far as decreasing death and hospitalizations, which was the goal of this, of the inoculation or the vaccine. As time went on, right, right now, my understanding is that the immune that it it wanes. And so right now, I could be at sixty, sixty-six percent, fifty-three percent. We know that it decreases over time. And so the booster really is to bring that immune level back up to that ninety or so percentage. But it has been proven that the the vaccine does diminish or wane over time, or the effectiveness does go down. So that's why the booster is necessary. I think that like the flu shot, we might need to get used to getting a booster every year until we see ourselves out of this. So I would not say that we get this last booster and we're done. I think eight months from there or maybe a year from there, we're going to be back trying, getting another booster, just as we do every year for the flu shot.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Hurst. Council Edwards.
I was just going to comment. Had doctors pointed Friday. It's been recommended that I get the booster immediately. Trinity did not have it because I, they had Moderna, but they did not have Pfizer. And they weren't sure when they would have Pfizer. So they don't assume that they have what they need because apparently, they didn't as of Friday. So just wanted to throw that out there.
So, Counselor Edwards, any clinic that that curative does has Pfizer. Any clinic. So when we first started getting vaccines, you recall that Moderna was what we all got. Bay State got it, Mercy got it, Boards of Health got it. So we did not have Moderna. None of the individuals that we vaccinated, we used Pfizer. It was all Moderna. Big Y has Pfizer. So I'm just telling you that there are some options out there for you. I think C B S has Pfizer. So if you just look around and just kind of do a little bit of research, I think you'll be able to find that third Pfizer vaccine that your physician is recommending.
Okay, yeah, I think this is a, originally, we were told to go see our doctors, had an appointment scheduled anyway, did a physical. And then she did recommend that as well as getting the flu shot. She said the flu shots were about a month out right now. But she didn't have, she had Moderna, she didn't have the Pfizer, so. But I guess it doesn't matter. I don't care where I get it. I just, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to follow your recommendations.
I appreciate you.
And and listen to the doctors as well.
Do you have, so I would recommend that your primary care give you something saying that you should have that third booster. Maybe you have it. So when you go into C B S or go to Big Y or go to Walgreens, all of those, all of those entities have Pfizer. So at least you have something that says that your physician is recommending that you get that booster once you walk in that door.
Well, C B S has the prescription that I take, so they should know that. The meds, the meds I take are to suppress my immune system, so they should know that. Anyway, appreciate the comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. To that point, you know, that that raises another, raises another question relative to the fact that the the mass vaccination sites, I think, almost exclusively gave Pfizer. And so if we have a large number of people in the city who received Pfizer, we, you know, we'll need to hopefully make sure that the state will will provide the Pfizer doses. So so we can certainly follow up on the the next, the next round of boosters. The only other question I had, Commissioner, was, are we expending any local funds still on advertising or is it all the, all the state funds?
We are not spending. We did spend money. We haven't, we haven't done our second round of advertisement. We will be buying ads in our local newspapers, particularly the ones that target communities of color. So we will be doing that. And that will be the city funds that we expend to do that. So we are, we are currently doing a campaign for the thirty-five and under. And we'll start to, you'll start to see that come out. But we have not spent money on that right now. We're continuing to work with the marketing people.
Will that include for the thirty-five and under social media?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, the department has two. We we have a Twitter account where we are putting social media messages up. We also have a separate Facebook account that we put media messages on. And for the thirty-five and under, we're going to create a separate social media platform, Facebook, so that those individuals can go right to. They don't have to go to the main website. They can go to something that's really targeted for them. So yes, that is a part of our planning process.
Okay, yeah, it would be excellent if if they could put some dollars behind that too, because I, you know, it's free, the the social media advertising can be pretty direct in terms of the age group that it targets and the location, if you geo-trace it. So hopefully, we can, we can see that occur. And also, I was speaking with the general manager at the Bumba, the Spanish language radio station. And they had, they indicated they hadn't seen any advertising since the last round. So that, that makes sense if we could also include them.
Sure, of course.
Okay, certainly. So I appreciate you, Commissioner. I know we went a little longer on the questioning today. But I feel, feel we got some important information. Or anything else you'd like to share with us or any other questions from councilors? I know also, Council Whitfield has a five-thirty, so I want to give the staff time to switch over.
There's always the next thing, isn't there? No, but I just wanted to thank you. We are, I am not. I spend a lot of time, like all of you, online, spend a lot of time on the phone with D P H and others. And so we, I try to get as much credible information as I can. I appreciate it if you all have information like Council Hurst did. He had an article and he just sent it to me, you know, around what Boston is doing and Mayor Janey. But thank you all for your time and your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, councilors, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You all later. And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.